Let's just call this. We're going to call this meeting to order. Special meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council, 3:30 on May 21st, 2020. I had to actually look at the date because with the quarantine, everything is running together. Kathy, if you would take roll call for whoever else is attending this meeting as far as staff and other relevant.
Okay, I have. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Attorney Walter?
Here.
Abby Ball?
Here.
Jim Wadowitz? Carrie Warner? Adam McLamb?
Present.
Todd Hunsinger? Randy Deese?
Present.
Alicia Massey?
Present.
Hayden Kramer? And Kathy, clerk present here.
Okay. Um. Oh. Um, hold on a second. Joe, can you call your mom? I'm in a meeting. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um. So I don't. I know this is a special meeting for the town manager search. So I'm going to turn this over to Ray. Um, I don't have a sheet for an agenda in front of me other than that. So, Mr. Allen, would you guide us through this?
Um, Mayor, one thing, if you would make the announcement, or if you want Kathy to make it for you, about public comments, I think that would be the first step, Mayor, if you were Kathy.
Oh, that's, Kathy, would you make that announcement?
Absolutely. The town invites the public to make comments on this presentation. Verbal comments will be received following the presentation from any meeting participants that are online. Also, comments received via email either before during or before during the meeting will be read. You can send them to klq@indiantrail.org, klq@indiantrail.org. Thank you. And then we can move to the town manager search discussion with Mr. Hankins.
Okay. Um, I'd like to open the floor with one council member at a time as I, I will go through. So we, since we're not in person, I don't see you, we'll start with Marcus.
Can we go on to somebody else and come back to me, sir?
Oh, of course. Shirley?
I'm here.
Did you have any comments or questions for Ellis?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, Mr. Head?
Um, no, I had a, I had a good conversation with Ellis and I liked the, the presentation he, he put together. And I have no other comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Morris, did you have anything?
No, I had an excellent conversation this morning with him, so I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, he was very thorough. And Mr. Barber?
I have nothing. I think what Mr. Hankins doing is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that leaves you, Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, sir, I'm ready. Sorry. Mr. Hankins, just for the benefit of everybody listening, um, do you think that based on all history, um, as a town, our, the, the, um, let's say the, the, the short timeframe that we've kept our managers on board, do you think that based on that history and the fact that we as the council are approaching this in the more serious way or manner, being thorough, you know, bringing on a professional search firm, do you think that will enable us to receive interest from suitable and qualified candidates?
Just back to our, I believe the answer is yes. Um, in, in a minute or two with the mayor's permission, I'd like to make a few comments about the process in general and the potential timeline and say a little bit about the, the job and what it is and the role and responsibilities, mainly primarily for the benefit of your citizens who are listening or might see the video later. But yeah, I, this morning, um, I greatly enjoyed having individual discussions with the mayor and each of the council members about the process and about the prospects and the way to, that I suggest approaching this. And then I had a, a very productive meeting with senior members of your town staff for about an hour and 15 minutes. It was very important to hear their comments, their suggestions about what they believe you all ought to be looking for. And in specific answer to your question, this is a difficult time, obviously, with all of us dealing with pandemic. Um, but I told your staff when they asked this very same question about what to expect here in the middle of this pandemic, I said that I really, really believe that this position will be viewed by potential candidates as attractive and desirable. Indian Trail has not enjoyed great management stability in recent years. Some managers who will consider applying will be mindful of that. They will do their research, their due diligence. At some point, many of them are likely to call me, and I encourage that. Um, and I will have the discussion with them and I'll be straightforward with them. And I will, I will confirm to them that, yeah, there's been some management turnover in Indian Trail for the last several years. But I firmly believe after the discussions today with each of the elected officials and with your very capable town staff, senior members, I, I believe this is a very desirable job where a good manager can come and make a meaningful contribution and work well cooperatively with the council and lead your staff and help you serve your citizens well. I believe it will be viewed as a very positive opportunity. Um, I will tell you that, as I mentioned to some of you this morning, the, the town manager recruitment process that we just concluded in Southern Shores, North Carolina, on the Outer Banks, went very well. We received 66 applications. I had a good discussion with the town council about the relative strengths and weaknesses of the candidates. They selected five to interview. They conducted those interviews by Zoom. Remote electronic interviews wasn't ideal, but it worked fine. And they just announced yesterday that they are appointing the town manager from the nearby town of Nags Head as the manager. So, yeah, even in these difficult times and even with the, um, some of the difficulties in the past in Indian Trail with managers, town managers, I, I think we will be able together to attract some very well-qualified managers for the council's consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Were there any further questions from council? Just make it, yeah, just call your name.
Mayor, may I?
Okay.
This is Karen.
Yes, Karen, please chime in.
I was wondering if Mr. Hankins could provide for the full council and the public who may be watching or who will watch later, his background, the, some information about Mercer the Firm, and maybe just provide us, you know, some general information for the citizens of Indian Trail and those watching so that we understand and they understand who, who he is and how he can, how he is helping the town.
Oh, you took my question, so I will accept it from you. Uh, Mr. Hankins, please, you have the floor.
Very happy to do that. Um, Ellis Hankins, I was born and raised in North Carolina, in Wilmington. A lawyer, like Karen, by way of Chapel Hill. I've been in and out of private law practice over my career, but I spent most of my career working on the staff of the State Municipal League, the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Um, I was the general counsel, the chief legislative lobbyist, went back into private law practice. But then I came back to the League of Municipalities staff and served as executive director for 17 years, retired six years ago. So, and then I've continued the teaching that I started. Um, I do some of that at UNC and NC State and Duke. Two Master of Public Administration programs. At Duke, it's a Master of Public Policy program. I'm a member of the Mercer Group, which is a national public sector consulting and executive search firm. Uh, we do these executive searches exclusively for public sector clients, mostly municipalities and counties, but also state municipal leagues, public risk pools and related entities all over the country. Uh, I've done several, good number of searches in North Carolina and in other states. Uh, and I'm, I still have a law license. I'm a town attorney for one town. Uh, so I've had my hands in this municipal government business for a lot of years. I know a lot of town managers, city managers, county managers across North Carolina and in some other states. Um, so I'm very pleased that the council saw fit to select our firm to assist with your search. Some general comments. Uh, there are two action items for you all. Uh, after I've finished making just a few comments and, and answering questions that you all might have, approval of the search timeline that I set and Kathy sent it to each of you with whatever changes you want to make to that, then approve it. And then let's stick to the schedule so that you all have a, an expeditious and productive search. And then approve the job ad, the draft job ad that I sent to. Um, so a few words about the town man, if I may, about the town manager position. Town manager is an officer of the town. It's provided for by statute and in your town charter, Indian Trail has the council manager form of government, which is predominant in North Carolina. The town manager is the chief executive officer. The, it's different from the elected officials. The elected officials, mayor and council, their job, your job is to provide the policy, the budget, the elected leadership for the town. Establish, after listening carefully to the wishes of your citizens, establish the, the goals and policies and the priorities. Um, and one way you do that every year is to adopt the town budget. But you also now have an opportunity to do something very significant. Appoint the next town manager. The manager is the chief executive officer who operates the town government staff and receives the delivery of services to your citizens on a daily basis under the policies and the priorities that the, the group of elected officials establish. So it's a, an important position with very important responsibilities. Good managers operate under something called the ICMA Code of Ethics. ICMA is the International City County Management Association. And managers across the country many years ago established and managers have, have maintained Code of Ethics. And it says several things. Managers work for the council on your policies. They don't decide those policies. They work with you all and give you good information and advice and recommendations. But then when you establish the goals and policies, the priorities, they assist you in carrying them out. And they supervise the town staff. They appoint the department directors. And they serve as good, cost-effective managers under the direction of the council. A very important set of responsibilities. The manager serves at the pleasure of the council. And that means that if the council is, if the manager is not performing acceptably, not working cooperatively with the council to accomplish your policies and priorities, or you, the council just decides that it's time for a change in management, the council has the authority to terminate the manager. But you never want to do that unless you really need to. Much better to sit down and have a two-way conversation with manager and establish the mutual expectations and make sure the manager understands the council's wishes and, and has a fair opportunity to, to implement those on the council's behalf. So that's the manager position. Let me talk a little bit, if I may, about the manager search process. I'm going to get into this timeline that I sent you all and I'll hold it up for the camera so your citizens can see it. There are several key dates on this. This process is going to run from now through about the end of August, aimed at the new manager probably starting work by late August or sometime by about the middle of September. Your interim manager cannot serve in this role forever, although you did very well in appointing a exceptionally capable interim city manager who has years of experience and is a professional manager who's held in very high regard by managers and certainly by the folks in Alamoor, where he served city manager for Raymond Allen. So that process started with the discussions we had this morning, continues with this council meeting and part of what I want to help you all do in this council meeting for your citizens, with your citizens who are watching, I, I want folks to understand the responsibilities of the position and the process that you're about to begin and the timeline for it. We talked this morning, I with individual council members and the mayor, and then I did with your group of department directors about what you all think you ought to be looking for. Um, and I soon will prepare a, um, a recruitment brochure. It's going to end up looking like this. This is the one that I did for the town of Mantio a couple of years ago. Your town clerk has sent me nice photographs from Indian Trail, so our graphic designer will make sure that they appear and, but the, but the nuts and bolts of this, it describes the town and the position and the, what we're looking for in the candidate. It has a long list of bullet points, uh, which I have encouraged the, the elected officials to help refine and then eventually approve the text of this. We'll send it off to our graphic designer and get it produced. And this document has two uses. It's the recruitment tool. I will send this to managers across North Carolina and elsewhere. Everyone I can think of who can help me on your behalf encourage well-qualified candidates to consider applying. I will send it after we've posted the job ads in several productive places. Um, I will send this recruitment brochure and the job ad to Master of Public Administration programs across North Carolina and maybe a couple of abutting states to get their help, their, their placement offices. They will send this to some of their alumni through their listserv and they'll post it on their website. That's where applications come from often. I will engage in a lot of, a lot of active targeting recruiting, a lot of phone calls, encouraging, um, well-qualified managers to consider applying for your consideration. Um, as applications arrive, I will very carefully review those resumes and select out the, the, the candidates who appear to be well-qualified. And I'll start making phone calls. I spend a lot of time talking with candidates and getting to know them and judging their qualifications and, and whether I think they might be a good fit under the criteria that you have asked me to include in this recruitment brochure. Told you all this morning, I put a lot of value on personal and professional maturity. Uh, that's what I want to hear before I recommend any of those people to you for your consideration. Um, so I will eventually, um, right after the end of the application period, develop a set of written materials to send to you all in advance of your next meeting with me. Uh, on this draft timeline, I have suggested that something called the semifinalist selection meeting occur. And it's, it's, uh, now I see, um, it has been scrolled down the screen. So you see the suggested dates for that semifinalist selection meeting. The council meetings are highlighted in yellow. Is Wednesday or Thursday, July 15th or 16th. Nothing magic about those two dates, but sometime in that general timeframe is when in this process the council will need to have that meeting. And it's a, it's a closed session discussion with me, typically hour and a half to two hours, to talk about the relative strengths and weaknesses of the strongest candidates. Uh, and to hear my assessment of, um, the candidates that, that might be a, a good fit under those criteria that you have laid out. So typically, the council instructs me to then go invite five to seven candidates for interviews. When the Southern Shores Council conducted their interviews about a month ago, they did it by Zoom electronically remotely, not ideal, but it worked fine, given our current limitations. They then invited one of those candidates back for a second interview face-to-face. Uh, and then they, this week, early this week, appointed that finalist as their new town manager in Southern Shores. So after you all instruct me which small number of candidates to invite for the interview, our firm then will get consent from each of those candidates to, for us to conduct a formal background investigation, background check on them. We like to do that before the interviews so that we can talk with you then about our, our findings. And to let you know, we fully vet the semifinalist. We check criminal and motor vehicle records. We verify employment and their educational credentials. Every now and then someone will misrepresent educational credentials. That has happened, so we verify that. And we check credit history. Town managers deal with public funds and you need to have confidence in their ability to do that. If there's, for example, a bankruptcy in their background, we want to know about that. We want to know the circumstances. Uh, if they have some history in, um, making delinquent payments, we want to know that. And if it's something like a dispute with a hospital about medical bills, then that's one thing, if it got resolved. Uh, but a recurring history of that probably is, is a problem that, that we want you to know about. So we complete those background checks and we have that information available to you. And then before your interviews, we also talk to at least a couple of references about each of the candidates so that by the time your interview day comes, we know a lot more about those candidates. We also will have sent each of them a list of written questions for them to answer, to answer, things like their management style, things they've accomplished in previous jobs that they're most proud of and that sort of thing. And it also gives you a good writing sample about those candidates, from each of those candidates. So then your interview day comes and the date we've suggested to you is Friday, July 30th. North Carolina law allows you to conduct those interviews in a closed session. Um, North Carolina law requires all of this application information, including the names of candidates, to be kept confidential, at least until near the end of the process. That's a requirement of North Carolina law. So you conduct these interviews in a closed session. If you interview as many as seven candidates, that's a full day. Um, the Southern Shores Council interviewed five. It took almost an entire day. And then they had a, a lengthy discussion afterwards, typically the council does, to discuss what you heard and give me instructions on what you would like me to do on your behalf after that. Sometimes after those initial interviews, the council will focus on one candidate and form a strong consensus that that is the person that you prefer, that you want me to go start a discussion with about terms of employment. But sometimes maybe you, you're almost sure, but you want to invite one, maybe two finalists back for a second interview. Ask some more questions. Finish getting comfortable, finish making your decision and then make an offer of employment. Uh, I will talk with you all about compensation comparisons, other towns that might be comparable to Indian Trail, give you an idea. And obviously you know the final salary of your, of your most recent manager. That might be a starting point, but you know, depending on where this manager is in the process, you might or might not be able or willing to offer salary at that, that same level. You, I, I hope what happens here is that we are able to attract and then discuss with you all a group of well-qualified managers for your consideration at different stages of their careers. Some relatively young people without as much hands-on management experience, but who have real potential, uh, who might strike me as a rising star, who somebody after a lot of discussion, I can recommend to you all someone that I think can get up the learning curve pretty quickly and become highly capable and highly performing. You probably will get some folks who are more toward the middle of their career with more hands-on management experience. And then probably some veteran managers who may be looking for a town to serve as town manager as their last manager job where they can make meaningful contributions as a veteran manager. Uh, I hope you have a good mix of those folks and it will give you an opportunity to compare and contrast. I always encourage elected officials, and you heard me say this this morning, keep an open mind. No preconceived notions. Um, talk with me about the candidates, select those candidates to interview, and then don't make any decisions until you have seen and heard all of the interviews and then have that discussion together and maybe a second interview. Set the date for the second interview that we suggested is April, I'm sorry, August 6th. Uh, but sometime soon after, in, in early to mid-August, the council will make that final decision about the candidate that, that you prefer. And you'll give me those directions on negotiating terms of employment on your behalf. When we finish that, um, the town, the new town manager, um, these days very likely will want to enter into a written employment agreement with you all. Uh, I'm a lawyer. I am in favor of carefully, clearly drafted, well-balanced employment agreements that spell out the terms of employment. Um, that can avoid a lot of, a lot of problems later when it comes time to end the employment relationship. So that is the process. I am happy to answer questions. And then when, when you all are ready to do it, uh, if you would please suggest necessary changes to that timeline and then approve it. And the same with the, the job ad. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is McIntyre. I'll ask a question if I can. Can you hear me, sir? Mr. Mayor?
We can hear you.
Sorry, I, I, I muted myself during his, so he didn't hear the noise in my background. Um, yes, please do.
Yeah, um, so Mr. Hankins, question here for, for you. What, um, based on your experience in terms of the recent search that you did, um, what advice can you give us so that we don't make any mistakes? Because, um, there are five of us on the council, I think, well, not, not five, but maybe four of us who've never gone through this before. I think Mr., um, I think you, Mr. Alvarez and Ms. Howe have probably gone through this before in terms of an official search. But what, what advice can you give us so that we, we don't make mistakes or we don't overlook somebody or underlook someone, um, based on the criterias that we have and in that we draw in somebody or we, we have people coming that could really be a good fit in the town?
Well, first of all, it's clear to me, based on my discussions with you all, the group of elected officials this morning, council is, is very well-focused on the search. You, you all intend to devote the time. You all intend to devote the time that it will take to make a sound decision and to get this right at the end of the process. Let me say again, absolute confidentiality of information through the process. You owe that duty to each other. And as I said, it is required by law. Do keep an open mind, as I said, with no preconceived notions. Don't decide right up front that you absolutely have to have a manager who has worked in North Carolina. You're probably going to get applications from a lot of good managers with good track records, effective managers with good reputation from other states who have not worked in North Carolina, who might or might not be a good fit for this position. Your job at the end of this process is after you've heard all these interviews with the folks you have selected, your job is going to be to decide among a group of folks who are all well-qualified, one way or the other, different strengths and weaknesses, who is the best fit in Indian Trail in the current circumstances. Sizable town, fast-growing and developing town, a lot of moving parts. It's not like every other town. You provide a lot of services, but you provide a good number of those under contract with service providers. And part of the manager's scope of responsibility is to supervise, oversee those contractual relationships with the sheriff's department, with Union County Public Works, et cetera. That takes some negotiating diplomatic skills. So all of that, I think, it is important for you all to finish this discussion about what it is you are looking for right up front. So let's get that straight. That will guide you through this process and help you make sound decisions at the end of the process. So that's all of the advice I can give you. Just keep an open mind, deliberate carefully, as I know you're prepared to do. And then, once you have formed a consensus, and I hope at the end of this process, a unanimous opinion, ideally, about the person you want to appoint, part of our scope of services in our agreement with the town is to assist with the transition, to help that manager arrive and to start work and get through at least a short transition period with your very good interim town manager. But then, if you want me to, I'll come back and help you facilitate, help facilitate, a discussion about expectations and performance evaluation criteria to get the relationship off to a very good start. The manager will come here with a realistic expectation that the entire group of elected officials will work with him or her to be successful and effective as your town manager, I hope, and you hope, to serve for some reasonable period of time, five, six, seven years or longer, as the town manager in your town. So that's the process and the essential components of it.
Mr. McIntyre, did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for Ellis? Okay. Has anybody received any written public comments or questions?
I have not received anything.
Counsel, have you received anything? I'll take that as a no. Is there any public on the conference call now that would like to make public comments? I'm opening the floor. Okay. Is that an acceptable time, Karen, to wait?
Mr. Mayor, this is Ellis. Let me make a suggestion, extended invitation to your citizens who may be watching and listening or who might see the video later. Karen, I'm sorry, Kathy and Karen, both have my contact information. I am happy for citizens to get my contact information from one of them and to give me a call or shoot me an email message to give me some of their comments about what they believe you're looking for, those bullet points in these recruitment brochures. Many times, they come from suggestions that have been made by interested citizens in the community. I'm going to go back home to Raleigh, where I live, this weekend and work on this recruitment brochure to incorporate the comments I've heard from you all today. And I'm happy to add in some that I hear from citizens, but then send this back eventually for approval by the council before we send it off to our graphic designer.
Okay. Kathy?
Yes.
If you would, just make sure that what Ellis just said is open to the public, both on our audio and on our website. If interested in, you'll know how to word it. I have it, but I can't just get the words out.
Would you like me to push it out on our sunshine list, just a notice?
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, I would say that's a good idea. Let's make this as transparent and inclusive as possible.
I will do. I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, approve of that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good. If there's no further questions for Mr. Ellis, we have two action items. First, to agree that, to approve the timeline and schedule. And if I have that worded correctly, if there's no discussion, we'll need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ellis. There are a couple of dates in there. And particularly, you flipped to page two.
Okay.
The first yellow highlighted item on page two that says council being to consider recommended candidates. If you would, please pick one of those dates, July 15th or 16th, if one of those works.
Okay.
And I think those are the alternatives.
Okay. I don't have my calendar in front of me for days of the week that they are. Does someone have a calendar?
There's Wednesday and Thursday, July 15th or 16th.
15th and 16th. Okay, good. That's for the record. Counsel, I'm going to leave that in your hands. If someone wants to make a motion for a preferable day for that on page two before we move forward.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
It's not required that I participate, but if counsel would like for me to participate in the meeting, the Thursday, the 16th, would be better for me. As you know, my arrangement with the town, I'm typically not here on Wednesdays because of my volunteer activities.
Okay, thank you, Raymond. All right, counsel, with that being said, did you want, would, a motion for the, I need a motion for the 15th or the 16th of July, understanding Mr. Allen's situation, if you want him involved.
Mayor, this is Mike. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the timeline with the date of July 21st. What's the phrase I need here?
July 16th, Thursday, July 16th.
I mean 16th, I'm sorry. I'm looking at.
Okay. July 16th?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Head's made the motion to approve the timeline with July 16th being the day, so Mr. Allen may participate. All in favor, Mr. McIntyre?
I'm in favor.
Ms. Howe?
I'm in favor also.
Mr. Barber?
In favor.
And Mr. Morse?
In favor.
Okay, motion, let the record state that the motion was passed unanimously. And I need a second motion for the, that was the recruitment brochure, correct?
Job advertisement.
The job ad, thank you. Worded correctly for the job ad. If there's no questions for Mr. Ellis or concerns about it, I'll need a motion to approve it. Anyone?
This is Todd Barber. Motion to approve the town manager job advertisement.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Mr. Barber's made a motion to approve the town manager job ad. All in favor, Mr. McIntyre?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Morse?
In favor.
Mr. Head?
In favor.
Ms. Howe?
In favor.
Mr. Barber?
In favor.
Let the record stand, the motion was passed unanimously. Is there any other further agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, one comment from me. Thank you for that. There's no time stated yet for that council meeting in closed session on Thursday, July 16th. So we can leave that open, and that meeting can later be scheduled sometime during that day of Thursday, July 16th. Let me ask you to please, before you forget to do it, reserve on your calendar those meeting dates, sometime either morning or afternoon, whatever you think you're all likely to decide about July 16th. The interview day, which is Friday, July 30th, is likely to be almost all day, starting early in the morning by about 8:30 and going through a number of candidates to select to interview most of the rest of that day. So please reserve those dates.
So counsel, July 16th, that would, July 16th would be, are both of those closed session meetings?
Yes, obviously, start out in an open session and someone make the appropriate motion to go into a closed session.
Okay. All right. Kathy?
Yes.
Would you prepare the proper announcements with Mr. Allen and make sure they're out as soon as possible, so we're ahead of this game? And just put the time as to be determined.
So I have the closed session for July 30th, and that will be for the actual interview of candidates, between five and seven candidates. And then also, we'll have July 16th, which will be a closed session meeting. And do we want to determine a time so I can go ahead and notice it? Or do we want to wait on that?
Definitely, let, you know, time to be, we can put TBD, time to be determined, but we'll make sure we get that, they know, we'll be given advanced notice.
I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, with the history we've had, I just want to be as transparent and open to the public as possible as to everything as proactive as possible. Even if insignificant information that we can add at a later date can be added. And I appreciate that from the council and staff. Is there any other action or any other items on the agenda? Or any, anything else from anyone? That counsel would like to say? Nope? Okay. So I guess, I'm guessing we can close this meeting. It was a pleasure to meet you today, Ellis. I look forward to working with you to find our next town manager. And counsel, the same. I will need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to adjourn. Ms. Howe?
In favor.
In favor? Mr. Morse?
In favor.
Mr. Head?
In favor.
And Mr. Barber?
Approved.
Okay, let the record stand. This meeting is adjourned unanimously. Everyone have a very blessed day, and I hope to see you soon.
Thanks.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you. Bye-bye.